For you close to the end of the show.
And um, when I get back on the air, I'll invite you guys on my show too, so. I can't be on while I'm campaigning, but I do.
That's the sucky part.
Oh honey, what's happening?
You have to.
I have a um. I have an opening wound that has been like slowly healed.
I'm so sorry.
I've never dealt with this before and I'm not dying, but what's happening? My skin kind of like opened up and.
And they have this problem or something.
Cause we having breakthroughs.
My old right side shoulder, pinched nerve. I've been checking out your motivational videos.
I swear I don't know if I know you from online.
I've been here my whole life.
Do you know the cure?
That's her dad.
And then I've been involved in theater and maybe my sister, but Karen. Who's your sister?
Her name's Kemi.
Oh Kathy was in like in Panther Women.
That's my little sister, so maybe that's where I'm seeing you.
Probably Panther Women, not at Little Puppa Theater this summer.
You got everything up? Um, call and number. Call and numbers up, uh, Facebook lives up.
Facebook lives up.
Hello, all right, everything's up, all right, good, listen up, listen up. Please turn your phones on silent, that's all I am.
Let me turn my phone off.
Y'all ready? Okay, here we go. Three, two. Welcome to the headline, I am your host Larry H Gardner. Uh, we're live in the studio at W W W dot W N R V one oh eight one dot com, nerve DJs, we're getting your nerves. The H stands for hotter than John Gruden's emails, let's get to it. We got the guest in the building, the lovely Miss Amani Capri in the house. Uh, before I bring her in, we need to talk first of all, uh, the queen of simply stunning me and Lizala Period is back. How are you doing Lizala?
I am great, I am so happy to be back here. I've been spending my summer at Cleveland Public Theater, uh, being a stage manager, working a lot of shows, having a great time and I'm happy to be back.
All right, of course, we got the queen with the gold mic who celebrated her birthday this past Saturday. Surprise Jay that we came up over there at Cornerstone?
Yeah, I was really surprised.
Shout out to your mom, Ms. Anne Rudolph that pulled it off. I was surprised, I was surprised she got it past you for real.
You know what I'm gonna tell you, so we were at home, right? So, you know, at a certain time, you know, I'd be like, I'm getting a shower, I'm going to bed. So I told my daughter, I said, are we going somewhere? She said, would you please get dressed girl? And I'm like, oh, okay, so I guess we going somewhere.
Jay for checking moms.
I was about to go to bed.
I know you was, I know you was.
You know, I don't play. I need my brood.
So, we have certain situations going on, uh, that's, but we also have sadness, so. So Judge Larry Jones passed away, uh, this past Thursday. And also, we had a recent passing today, uh, Melvin Hutchinson, AKA Mr. Milligram that passed. But the biggest shock, well, not shock, but to me as a journalist. And Lizala, I know your dad, you know, shout out to Dick Perry, you know, who's also hurting too. We lost a friend, confidant, um, advocate in Mansfield Frazier at eight seventy-eight. So I understand that we got a show to do, we gonna get right into it. But I'm asking for a moment of silence for all three of these African-American journalists, so. Give us thirty seconds, a moment of silence for all three of you. It, it, this is, it shocked me, um, just, you know, Mansfield has always been a mentor, like I've trained him like a kind of mentor when I first got into. Better Cleveland Association of Black Journalists and, you know, and he was always good to learn from the greats. So it's just, you know, and, and shout out to his daughter, you know, and the Mansfield story is that he had a daughter that he. Never seen until maybe a couple of years ago, and when he found out, he embraced it with open arms, so. Yeah, and he brought it actually to one of the meetings that we had, so it was like, you know, refreshing and he knew what it was, so he talked about it on his Facebook and. And shout out for him being a W A T M, iHeart Radio for when the North Coast Natural Solutions scandal hit. He had me come on there and talk about, you know, how people were rambling. Speaking of rambling, I'm going to say this, now I gotta have announcement, and now there's some people that were upset about Wednesday's video when I took it at, um, Shore House Baptist Church. That was the last Wednesday, yes, la- last Wednesday, yes, I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna say this to everybody. Nobody tells Larry Gardner who to endorse. First of all, second of all, and I'm trying to be nice because my guest is here and I ain't trying to cuss in front of her. But the thing about it is, is that I'm telling you right now, nobody tells Larry H Gardner what the hell to do. I am not endorsing anybody, I don't go the way of Aaron Phillips. I do not go the way of Aaron Phillips, so I'm going to make my endorsement announcements close to the end of the show. And a lot of people are gonna be either happy or upset, and I really don't give a damn. You don't tell me, as a media person, who to go for. I go for what God and my heart and the people need what tell me to go for. I don't listen to anybody but that, so you don't tell me what the hell to do, period, all right.
He meant that, he meant all of that.
The word is saying it with my chest right about now, so. You know what, s- speaking of candidates, uh, we got one in here. I'm gonna let her chime in on some other things that have been going on, so T-Rex, the human T-Rex on the ones and twos, please play the entrance music for this lovely queen. Right about now. So, the reason I'm playing the smooth loveliness Indian on, India already. Little things because this woman wants to cause big things, she wants to be the camp, the Maple Heights City Council President. She is running, she has been on the radio, she's been everything to everyone, please welcome, not India already. But Ms. Amani Capri in the building in the studio right now, hey Amani, how you doing?
Hey y'all, hey.
So, tell me, doing all the stuff that you've been doing, why motivational speaker, you know, educated all that. Why do you want to run for Maple Heights City Council President?
We can keep it a thousand, I love your show and, um, I just love the theme A N F scan. Don't stop being who you are, cause I'm sitting here, number one, I wanna say that. But I, first of all, thank you for the invitation to be here, thank you to you and Ms. Day. I love listening to the show, I love listening to your courageous voices and opinions. And to be honest with you, directly answering your question, politics is not something that I have really intended to get into. It chose me, and I literally say that like right before COVID exploded last year. I was flying back to, um, Cleveland from a speaking gig, a breakthrough speaking gig for me. And I was on the plane like, yeah, this is what I want to be doing and I want to get paid well and all the stuff like. And I said, well, God, you know, is there something else that you want me to do in Cleveland, I mean, this is my home, I was born in Bedford, grew up most of my. First part of my childhood in Oakwood, um, I was like, is there something else you want me to do here, like, cause if it's not, maybe I'm gonna start putting together a relocation plan. And I swear to you, within a week of me making that prayer, I got a phone call. From some people in my city who said, we've been watching you and the work that you do, and we really are impressed. We feel like you have a lot you could offer Maple Heights, would you consider running for office? If you do, we'll give you support, but our city needs what you're about. And I was kind of like, wait, what, like, that's not really, that God, you know, so, um. I have a relative who is in politics in New York, he's mayor of Newburgh, New York, shout out to my cousin Mayor Tony Harvey. I called him and consulted with some other people that I trust, and he said, you know, if you prayed and God brought that to you. Maybe you should pay attention to it, how I got started in city council, if you decide to do this, you know, I'll, I'll be there and help you every step of the way, and so. It really has been a journey with a lot of prayer and asking for help and guide me to the right people and. The right information, you know, I'm running against an incumbent and this is my first time getting in politics, so there's a lot of learning curves I've had to catch, but. That's the real four one one, this was not something that Amani Capri was like, oh yeah, I'm about to go, I just prayed. And I, I have found that when I pray and I'm obedient to what comes up, things open up. In a much greater way than I would have imagined, and I have the opportunity to serve in ways that I would not have necessarily. Thought of initially myself.
So, the, I'm, I'm hearing like, there's a first time candidate in the Cleveland mayoral race in Justin Bibb. Uh, going against and it's kind of candidate Kevin Kelly. So, you know, and the thing about it is like what I'm hearing from, you know, people talking about Justin, he's inexperienced in politics. Do you get that too?
You know, I haven't had a lot of people say that to me in like, uh, in a, are you, do you know what you're doing type of way, but. I've had some questions, just what's your experience or background, do you feel ready? I do feel like I have experience that is valuable for the city and that would be an asset to me being council president. But one thing I can also tell you is that, not to take away from anybody whose experience in any field, but sometimes you need a different spirit. You need different energy, a different type of passion, and another level of. Being open and coachable, coachable from your constituents on how to help bring something new. So, when I got out and was canvassing to get on the ballot, one thing I heard from the residents is, you know, Maple Heights has a lot of people who really care about what's going on with the city. But they want fresh ideas, they want fresh energy, more creativity, more engagement from their leadership and not just around, you know, campaign time. Or certain people are very visible and then other people, you know, may not be as visible, so, um. You know, I, I feel, anything that I have done where it was a first for me before, I found when I bring the right spirit and I come to it, try to be a student. God gives me everything that I need to excel in that, so.
That's because she's embracing the servant leadership.
Right, that's what's up, that, 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 it sounds like it to me. Uh, anybody got any questions, uh, as far as, you know, you got one, Jay, Lizala?
Well, actually, I want to know about your platform and what it is you want to do primarily, once you become.
Sure, so my platform is based on what I call the four E's, which is to engage, empower, elevate. And, um, why do I get nervous, engage, empower, elevate and energize. And so when it comes to the city council president, the responsibilities of the city council president. Are to run the city council meetings, act as a liaison between, um, the administration council and the mayor. Also between council representatives and members of the community, so say for instance, if you have a complaint against your city council person. You would take that to your council president, I would address that with that person. Not also just in terms of, you know, reprimanding, but building relationships and like being a bridge. And so, um, if you have been following the news about things in Maple Heights over the last year, you will know that we have made the news. For some positive things and for some negative things, you know, like the prior resolution that failed several times in Maple Heights, I think in the spring.
That was introduced by Richard.
Yes, and there was a lot of, um, what's the word I want to use?
Pushback?
I don't know if pushback is the word, there was a lot of bitchy all and kind of chaos behind how those initial votes went. And some of those meetings, if you called and listened, you know, got a little heated. And, you know, so the tone, it's, it's the council president's job to set the tone of those council meetings. And, you know, to also make sure that people are not crossing certain lines in those meetings, those are people's meetings. You know, so energizing, i- i- it's a part of my platform, it's like setting a different tone, raising the bar a little bit on the professionalism for the meetings. Not that every meeting is off the hook, I'm not trying to put that out there. Yes, so setting a higher bar for that, also, you know, with my background in communications and marketing, um, and journalism, I graduated from Kent State. Broadcast journalism bachelor's and my master's is in digital storytelling and marketing. I feel like where there's a gap in the city is being able to really push and promote the city council meetings as being the people's meetings. And getting them more involved, so if you have a population of almost, what, twenty-three thousand people. But only about twenty to twenty-five come out to the meeting, that's not bad. But imagine, right, but imagine how much we can move the, the needle. Yeah, and how, how much more accountability. Would be on the table for those people who've been elected and they would have to think about, you know what, I better really think about how I conduct myself. Because there's many more constituents watching and participating. So, that's the energized piece and part of the engagement piece on my platform. Engagement also, engagement empowerment also would be gaged towards young people and trying to get them more involved. And give them spaces and places to use their voices, understanding that their voices matter. And helping to create change, you know, we do have quite a few youth programs in Maple Heights, but again, because of some gaps in communication. Not all the residents know about programs that are available, and to be honest, they really know, that I can tell. Let me not say it's not there, but from my kind of initial learning and observing and interacting, I think there are opportunities. To create more space for young people to be heard and have their ideas involved in how we shape the next chapter for Maple Heights, like a youth council. Something like that, you know, and then engage, empower, you know, the whole reason I'm running is because. I'm really about just helping people tap into their courage and use their voice. And, um, that's really what I want to bring to. The process of governing Maple Heights, make it more interesting, make it something that people are more excited about. That residents feel more connected with, you know, um, maybe creating a campaign around really canvassing all year to connect. With the residents and having smaller community discussions, like, you know, uh, because I am an incumbent, I mean, uh, new person. Running against an incumbent and still having to prove myself, you know, my campaign and fundraising is, uh, you know, I have to earn. Earn everything, so my first meet and greet was at my house. In my driveway, I have a pretty big backyard, you know, I have a nice portable P A system, set that up. And, you know, fifteen, twenty people came and we have our chairs kind of like in a circle. And it just felt so cool to have like informal discussion about who I am, what you care about, what you want to see changed, but are you willing to move class? Having the capacity to complain to help create the changes you want to see. So, um, that type of engagement I would like to also bring, and then all of that together, I feel like will help elevate. Maple Heights and the quality of life in Maple Heights, but it really takes a community and, and the missing piece I think is. Somebody to help galvanize people to understand, you have to own your democracy.
That's right.
And if you look at what's happening on the local level, on the national level. You know, I probably should be paying a little bit more attention to the youth than I have been, but I've been so busy, um.
It'll make you cry, girl, don't worry about it.
But the point is, you know, our democracy is like dangling.
That's right, and I'm really listening to you here, I'm hoping that you inspire more people who are motivational and think in more spiritual ways. To get involved in government, because that's probably our missing piece right now.
So your incumbent, um, he's been, he or she, he, he's been in that seat for how long?
This will be his second term, if he were elected, so like four years already. And he was a council person for District Four prior, where current councilwoman is Dana Anderson.
So how is your relationship with, um, Mayor Blackwell?
It's very good, and, um.
She's a great man.
She's awesome, and I, I would very much embrace the opportunity to work with her, and honestly, I have. Uh, made the determination based on the things that I've learned as a candidate. And just my passion to what it serves, like where I am, um, regardless of the outcome, I want to be more involved.
So Mayor Blackwell has done a lot for Maple Heights, she's turned Maple Heights around. She's brought a lot of retail, whether it's pick box or, uh, you know, whether it's local, that she's actually done a lot to change. Um, how Maple Heights looks.
You know, and last night, there was a state of the city presentation that she did and also state of the, uh, school district that the superintendent did. There are also people running for, um, the school board in this election cycle too, so. Their presentations were very good last night, but I loved, you know, what the mayor shared. A highlight of some awesome things that have happened during her time in office, we're out of fiscal emergency. In less than five years. That's huge, she, she came into office and there was like, what, I think a two point seven or two point nine million dollar deficit. Our general fund is up to like six million now.
Shout out to Mayor Blackwell, uh, every time I see her, she always smile, buzz, everything, she, it, it's, you know, you have, when you are blessed. Then it shows on your face that you can bless other people, so.
When you follow the mindset of your model of servant.
Right, servant leadership.
That, that's what you get.
It's, I think it's lost on the city of Cleveland, just leaving it alone.
Don't go there.
I am going there and back in there again.
I'm just gonna sit here and, and watch, I'm gonna be quiet, the queen's gonna be quiet. I'm gonna let Larry have the mic.
Uh, so, the thing is, is that you are, I mean, app- apparently you've been fundraising and stuff like that, you volunteers. How can people volunteer for your campaign?
So, you know, I'm always on social media, especially since I'm still healing up with my ankle thing, shout out to everybody and you Larry for all the prayers and love. Over these last few months, that was a whole other thing, but if you're interested in volunteering or helping with the campaign, please follow our social media. Amani Capri for, council president on Facebook, Amani Capri the number four council president on Instagram. You can D M me, you can email us at friends of Amani Capri at. You know, I've been blessed, like we've been able to get yards, get some yards on, I'm starting to get those out, have flyers, I'm having a meet and greet. On Sunday at Sam Silks Lounge from two to four P M, don't worry, it ends when the Browns.
Oh, just keep going, just keep going.
Stop, 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 we had a rough loss last week.
Rough, rough is an understatement.
You know what?
We'll talk about that.
Yeah, we ain't talking about the Browns this week, we gonna talk about John Gruden's emails, this might be bringing the hole in it. This is Jay's birthday, let the Pittsburgh get a, a victory this week. Thanks.
And happy birthday. My mom's a Libra, we've been celebrating all month.
What, what's your birthday?
Ten sixth, October sixth.
Mine's October ninth, yep, we good people.
So.
Until you piss us off.
Shout out to your mom, how's your, your mom's been helping you out a lot, right?
She's my mom, I call my mom the general, because she used to be in the military, she's been in several war zones. My mom is a real soldier, like she shows up.
What, what branch? Oh, she.
She really is.
She is a soldier, I, I get, shout out to your mom for real.
She was in, she did a, a year in Iraq, she was in, um, Somalia during the Black Hawk Down. That happened right out of somewhere where she was stationed, she was there, she was in Korea for a year, now she's a yoga instructor and like personal vegan chef. So, and helping caretake for our, my grandmother, but she's been dope, like shout out to mommy when you see this. She helped me canvas.
Really?
My mom does a yoga class, a donation based yoga class at Farmer Jones in that like grassy area next to the market. And I've started going out there and just, oh, shout out to Farmer Jones too, cause they let me set up little table and. Hey, come say hi to Candace Capri. My mom is, is whatever is needed, not even to mention like, I've had been in the hospital three times in like. What, July, August, September, four weeks each time. And my mom was just between caretaking with my grandmother during the day, coming and doing what I needed or whatever at the hospital. And checking on me when I got home, like she's the real M V P and the real deep, the real general.
Did she retire from the military?
She did not, she got out early, cause it was like way too stressful. And I think like what, maybe ten, twelve years.
Yeah, my cousin, he, he is a, a sergeant major, this is it for him, that's the highest rank you can go. Yes, and he's gonna retire, I think, two more years, I think. So he probably, um, they probably crossed paths, I'm sure.
Shout out to all veterans.
Yeah, my dad simplified do or die.
Okay, that's what's up, and it, that, so, you've been, a bit, I mean, the, the hospital stays, it's probably been rough on your campaign. So your mom's been pretty much taking care of it and.
Nah, she, she didn't really take care of the campaign, but, um. What I can say is that sometimes what we think is a setback. Is like set up for a launch, so, you know, in the beginning, I was really kind of concerned about how would this affect my campaign. Cause I can't get out and be as mobile as I need to be, but. God and awesome people who are helping with my campaign, I do have some people who are kind of volunteering to be my street feet. And I know how to use social media and I've been using that, I have also, as my healing is moving in the right direction. And I got the okay from my doctors about what I can and cannot do, I've started getting back out, so you know, I'm here, I got.
That's a nice hallway though. Did you park on the side, I gave you instructions to park on the side.
I came right where I needed to, I, I took an Uber and then I'll be picked up at the end of this, but, um. You know, one thing I want people to know about me, like, I, I'm at peace whatever God's will is with this election, although I'm. I claim victory, when I start something, I intend to finish it strong.
That's right.
When I was dealing with what I was dealing with in the hospital, and I still have quite a ways to go to fully heal, but. One thing I, I said was that, um, I made the ballot, that was a lot of hard work. In a short period of time, and I still had my ankle stuff starting then, I was out there like with this hole starting in my ankle and a staph infection. So, it was like.
Yeah, God was looking out for you.
Yeah, and it didn't spread, that was. So, you know, some of my family was kind of like, well, if you decide to slow down on your campaign or not do it, like, you know, it's okay, you gotta put your health first and. I'm listening, I'm praying, what I got in prayer was to keep going.
That's right.
I, I just want to show people that the type of person I am, like if I say I'm gonna do something, I do it, and if I start something, I see it through. I didn't want to have any regrets that, okay, even though I had this health challenge, I didn't give it my all, I just, I didn't want to just sit at home and put my foot up and not work social media. Or not.
Not do anything.
And for those people that put their trust to sign their signature to get on the ballot, I feel like I owe them. You know, effort that I could put forward, and so what's really, um, interesting is that I've been getting feedback. From different places and spaces to keep going, keep doing what I'm doing, that I'm making some noise, that people are paying attention. So, um.
Keep running, keep running. Don't, don't stop. Delay doesn't mean deny, keep running, exactly.
So, you're the camp, so, the election is November second. It's like everything goes down November second right now, is there early voting in the Maple Heights?
Early voting can happen at the Board of Elections, even for Maple Heights, but you have to go there.
Calhoga County Board of Elections, so yeah, if you are early voting, go ahead and vote early, and November second is general for. Everybody, everything and everyone, so. Again, social media sites, so people can either volunteer or donate money to this young lady.
Yes, please, and let me tell you, like, your money is going towards flyers, like food at the meet and greets, um. Yard sign, I mean, it's going towards reaching the people, so again, you can find us on Facebook, Amani Capri for council president. Instagram, Amani Capri the number four council president, uh, Cash App is the dollar sign, Friends of Amani Capri. And, oh PayPal, I forgot about that, Friends of Amani Capri. I have an at Blue link too, that's in the bio and all the social media, I'm trying to get, I have a website that I'm actually trying to launch and. Only thing that we're trying to work out is.
All right, speaking, speaking of elections, Jay, uh, you want to announce what's going on on the twenty-first?
On the twenty-first of October, we are bringing the mayoral candidates, Justin Bibb and Kevin Kelly, um, to War Two. It is a collaborative. Um, to Ward Two. It is a collaborative um town hall forum between um Ward One and Ward Two. Which are the two largest voting wards in the city of Cleveland. Um, doors open at five, the debate will begin at six, and we'll be going until seven thirty. It is gonna be at the Sanctuary Baptist Church. I don't know the address exactly, Larry, if you could just chime in with that for me.
Four zero zero four, East under thirty first Street, Cleveland, Ohio, four four one oh five.
Now, this is the time, if, if you look at all the debates that have gone on um in the mayoral um race. They've all been on the west side of Cleveland. Or virtual. Um, this came to me and I called on Andre White and said, hey, listen. We need to bring them to our communities. They need to come to the east side of Cleveland. So if you're in wards three, you're in wards four, five, you're in ward six, you, ward ten. All of the east side wards, you need to be at this forum on October the twenty first. Um, yours truly will be the moderator um for this um mayoral forum. Um, and this is your time to have your say. This is your time to ask the questions that you want to get answered. By our next leader in the city of Cleveland. If you don't get out and ask the questions or come to the meetings, nothing's going to change. And I was listening to um Councilwoman Samples down in Akron today, and she brought up a very valid point, you know. We can talk and we can say all this stuff on social media, you know, we can post all this stuff on the gram, Facebook, you know, we can go live. But until we get up off our asses and put some action into motion, nothing is going to change. We've gotta stop sitting on the sidelines. You gotta come off the bench. And you gotta get in the game and you gotta play. So this is your time to play. October twenty first, doors open at five P M. We will be providing um hand sanitizer and um mask um for the event. And it's at Sanctuary Baptist Church, Larry, and what is the address again?
Four zero zero four, East hundred thirty first, Cleveland, Ohio, four four one oh five. Going to your point, before we go to break, Jay, of getting off the bench, Imani is playing hurt, period. She's, so she got an ankle. She's still out here campaigning to compete. So there's no excuse for anybody who's well bodied and able bodied not to get off their ass and do what they supposed to do. Because this young, because this queen right here, right now, she playing hurt, period, point blank. She like one of the defensive players for the Browns. You're like, I ain't trying to be funny or nothing, but it's real. Right, so.
Yeah, action is, is, is what we need. It takes a community. We can't sit back. And say, okay, I voted for you, now you got.
Right, exactly.
And, and that's what we're, we're accustomed to now. That's the mindset that we have.
So we're going to break. This is K-John, one of my favorite songs. We'll be right back. We're gonna talk about the John Gruden emails and the Dave Chappelle backlash on the Headline Eye. We back on NerdDJs dot com. We get on your nerves, be right back.
My dad was a police officer and firefighter. My mom's a social worker. I'm Justin Bibb. I lost a cousin to murder. Crime and violence threaten us all. We need real public safety and equal justice. My safety plan will improve police training, add mental health support, move more police out into Cleveland's neighborhoods. And guarantee accountability with citizen oversight. Real safety and equal justice. It's a fight we can win. I'm Justin Bibb.
Paid for by Neighbors for Justin Bibb.
Hey, everybody. This is Lisala Peary, asking you to tune in every Wednesday to the Headline Eye at six P M. On W N R V one oh eight point one.
Are you a DJ, radio show, music artist, or podcaster, and you've thought about having your own mobile app? B V Mobile Apps could be the solution. They specialize in creating apps with live audio streams, mixes, music, and songs. You can integrate your social media, videos, blogs, and most importantly, send push notifications to your followers. For more information, B V Mobile Apps dot com, or on social media at B V Mobile Apps, that's B as in business, V as in victory. B V Mobile Apps dot com.
Hey, everybody. It's the queen with the gold mic from Headline Eye, and you can catch me every Wednesday from six until eight P M. On W N R V one oh eight point one.
Somebody sexy and wrong.
Alright, we're back on the Headline Eye on Nerd DJs, W W W dot W N R V one oh eight one dot com. Nerd DJs, when we get on your nerves. That was Brian McKnight, Grown Man Business. You know, he got, you know, you playing with them little boys, he ain't got time for no grown man business. That's correct. Speak, and grown woman business, because we got Imani Capri, who's running for Maple Heights City Council President. Doing her grown woman business, you know, on ones and twos. So before we go in any further about. John Gruden and Dave Chappelle and all the emails versus the L G B T community and everything else like that. There was a debate on Monday night on livestream between Justin Bibb.
Idea stream.
Idea stream, Justin Bibb and Kevin Kelly. Um, by the way. There is also, shout out to Russ Mitchell, W K Y C, W K Y C is live streaming another town hall via um. Just virtual with Justin Bibb and Kevin Kelly, sponsored by the N double A C P, as I heard last night. So that's at seven thirty, so I know people want to cut away to that, but.
That's tonight.
That is tonight. That is tonight. So, I'm going to do my grades, so. If anybody wants to chime in, if any, Lisala, did you see the debate?
I did.
You did?
I did.
Okay, so I'm gonna do the grades. So Jay, I'm going to start with. The newcomer to politics, Justin Bibb. So Jay, what was your grade for Justin? B, alright. So, Lisala?
I give him a B plus, yeah.
B plus? So I don't know, I'm, I'm gonna let Imani go ahead. Do you want to chime in on here? What grade?
I don't, because I didn't see it. I was working on my own campaign. I'm so sorry.
That's an honest answer.
Alright, honest answer. Alright, I'm gonna give Justin an A minus. And the reason I'm giving him an A minus is because of this. I'm giving Justin an A minus is because even though it didn't look like he wound anybody. You know, the issue twenty four, which is always dicey for anybody, you know, you know, citizens policing the police, pretty much that's actually is on the ballot. He didn't do anything to hurt himself. He didn't do anything to, ah, he didn't do, eh, not really to hurt himself. A little bit, but to some people, but. Listen, he didn't, he, he sounded poised and confident. That's the one thing that you wanted.
He did sound poised and confident. He needs to learn a little bit more about Cleveland history, about Cleveland's political history. He didn't have the recall on some facts that he really could have won people over with. And that's why I say B plus. So if he had had those facts, he really would have won people over, but can I jump ahead for one second? The issue is issue twenty four. And the people who are against it are going to come out to vote. We need to do whatever we can to get the people who are for it to come out and vote. Because the people who support Justin, I am very concerned about them actually showing up to the polls and marking the right. They're gonna stay home. Is what my fear. And I hope you don't, I hope you people come out and do the right thing for the city.
So, I'm going, so we're going next to co- uh, city councilman president Kevin Kelly. His grade. Lisala, I want you to start first. What was Kevin Kelly's grade in your eyes?
C.
Are you being generous with the C or are you just saying C?
I'm saying C.
Okay. Jay, your grade for Kevin Kelly?
C minus.
D. I'm saying D. And the reason why is because of the simple fact that the matter is, is that. You being the incumbent, being in politics, sounded like you was running for the first time in your life in any damn way.
You know why I gave him a C minus? Cause he was a D. But when I seen him at Happy's Birthday Party, baby, listen, that moved the needle for me. Y'all seeing?
Listen.
He was at Happy's Birthday Party.
I heard, listen, the reason I gave.
He was on Harvard.
Listen.
At Happy's Birthday Party.
I don't give it.
Some points with that?
Little bit.
Nah, because nobody. Be, no, because somebody brought him there. He ain't come there by his damn self, and the thing about it.
It don't matter. He was posted up, and then he, he moved the needle a little bit for me too. This is probably what got him to the C minus, because he was at a F. And, and then he moved to a D when I seen him at Skeets. That moved him to a D. And then when I seen him at Happy's Party.
Brother's behind this.
But it don't matter, but when. He got a dog in the race.
That's why. He trying to move up the ladder.
But when I seen him go to Happy's Birthday Party, and I seen him posted up taking pictures, baby, I said, here, C minus.
That's funny, because that actually drops points for me.
C minus.
Ah, ah, you know what, the thing.
You know why? C minus, because he putting in the effort. And if people don't really see what's really going on with him. Coming into the community now at this point, and I'm being sarcastic.
Okay, thank you.
I'm being very sarcastic and I'm being funny, but people don't always see it that way. But this is a true tale of how disconnected Kevin Kelly really is. With the communities in, on the east side of Cleveland. He's never been on the east side of Cleveland, like he's been on the west side of Cleveland. So when I do that, it's funny, and I do it because I want to see that people are really paying attention. Pay attention, people. You ain't seen him before now. And I'm not, and I'm not endorsing a candidate either way. I'm not for Justin, I'm not for Kevin. I'm straight down the middle. I won't know who I'm voting for until I get in that box on November the second. Let me make that very clear. I won't know who I'm voting for until November the second, when I get in that box. But what I'm gonna do, as long as I'm on this air, I'm gonna give you the narratives that I see and hope that you can understand. What I'm trying to tell you, because I want you to make your own decision for yourself as to who needs to be the next leader of Cleveland. Because Cleveland is on the cusp of change. It's on the cusp. And we can either make the change happen ourselves and change our democracy, because whoever is gonna go in that seat. You've still gotta hold them accountable. You've still gotta hold them accountable to what you are expecting of them. Do not expect them to get in the seat and do what is best for you. You, as the resident and the constituents of the city of Cleveland, will still need to remind them, I put you there to do a job. And that job is to do what is best for me, the people that you are elected to serve. We pay your salary by these tax dollars because we live in the city of Cleveland. So people, please understand that when I say something. And the reason why I'm not endorsing any candidate this time around in the mayoral election, because I said it before and I'll say it again. I'm not too comfortable with either one of them, but I've gotta stop and take my emotions out of it. And I've got to say, you know what, I gotta think about the community. I gotta think about what's best for everybody besides me. Let me carve out my emotions, put them on the shelf, and do what's right by the people. So I'm gonna continue. With things that are happening, things that are going on, but I'm not gonna be endorsing any candidate for the mayoral race. And best of luck to all of them.
She's not. I'm going to announce mine at the end of the, close to the end of this show. That's the other, one of the biggest surprises of that. Because usually I never endorse anybody.
No, he doesn't.
Notes. But the thing is, is that it's about time, because I'm sick of the, uh, um.
I'm here for it. I'm, I'm here for it.
I'm sick of the, I'm, I'm gonna just say that, excuse me. I'm sick of the, I'mma just say that, excuse me, pardon my French, Imani. I'm sick of the foolery and fuckery going on in the city of Cleveland right to now. The foolery and fuckery going on in the city of Cleveland right now. Because the simple fact of the matter is, is that, listen, Maple Heights is a wonderful mayor in that black well and got people like Imani running in the city, in the city of Maple Heights. Cleveland keep messing around. A lot of people gonna go to Maple Heights because they sick and tired of fuckery and foolishness too. Period, point blank. Or go to Shaker, or go to Bedford, Independence, wherever where they can get justice. Because right now, there is none in the city of Cleveland right now.
But here's what I will say too, Larry, that the people, the constituents in the city have got to do their part. We can no longer sit on the bench and blame the politicians.
Come on.
We can't do that anymore. We keep saying we want change, then be the change that you expect and the change that you want. Stop playing these games. Stop thinking that you don't have to do anything once you put these people in these seats.
That's right.
That's where we mess up at. We don't hold them accountable and what has happened is they become complacent.
Right.
So now those that hold them accountable or hold their feet to the fire, we're the troublemakers. Cause we don't wanna be quiet.
Right.
We don't wanna sit on the plantation and not voice our opinions. I'm the very one that's gonna run away and say, hey, look at him, master, we got a problem, we got a problem. And we gotta stop thinking that once we put these politicians in these seats, that they're gonna do what's best for us.
That's right.
Remember, I always tell you, they suffer from the whiff them, the what's in it for me syndrome.
I thi- I think I seen it in the endorsements for Kevin Kelly. The thing about it is, I see, I, 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 let's, let's, let's go there. Let's go there. All right, let me just say this. Now, Blaine wants to be city council president.
He got a, he got a dog in the race.
Right.
Got a dog in the race.
Yvonne and Kevin Conwell, they gonna do what they gonna do because they're quote unquote loyal. Unfortunately, there's one African American, and I had an argument with one of his friends last night.
I'mma eat this cookie while he make this announcement.
So Bashir Jones, thank you for blocking me after I had like the blocking me.
He blocked you?
On my Facebook, because of the simple fact of the matter is, the reason that you were in the race in the first place was to take the black vote away, some of the black vote away from Zach Reed. Mission accomplished. He ain't get to the general, yo ass ain't neither. So the thing about it is, all this setup was to make sure that Kevin Kelly skirted his way in. The problem is that I have with you is that you're an alpha and Justin's an alpha too, and you never, ever, ever go against your brother, nigga. Now.
So how you really feel?
Let's go to the, um.
That cookie break was good.
Mm-hmm, how you really feel, Larry? Can I just say something to that?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, brother Bashir, you knew better. And you knew that there's, there's a, there's this bond between you and your bros. You know this already. And, and Bashir, baby, you, you, you should've stayed on the porch with the little dogs, cause you wasn't ready for the big dogs. You should've stayed on the porch.
You weren't.
And for now.
Now have a conversation, me and him. He can sit right across this table.
But for now, the part that really unnerves me about brother Bashir is the fact that he said the bougie black people.
Oh, I'll be bougie.
Didn't vote for him.
I'll be bougie then.
So what you saying is, brother Bashir, is that your bougie black people are the problem. So in other words, bruh, you were sitting here playing on the emotions of what we call our street.
Hello.
Family.
So you was trying to separate black people from black people?
So you dividing brother Bashir. You divide and conquer brother Bashir, cause as long as you was running around in Ward Seven and you was doing these sleepovers on the corners in your ward, you wanted everybody around you, whether they were bougie or not. But when you get up here and you don't win this race to be the mayor of Cleveland, because you said had the bougie black people did what they were supposed to do, you would be in the race for mayor. Bruh, uh-uh, wrong answer, no you would not have been.
I did donate, I did actually, when he was down there on the sleepover, I donated a couple of the things of water.
But see, that just tells me your mindset is, you didn't care who you, you used whatever you need to use to get done, whatever it is you needed to get done. So you were using all of the people in Ward Seven, whether they were bougie or whether they were ghetto, or whether they were monkeys swinging around on the tree, as you've always said, and you said it on your, one of your lives. But you forgot, bruh, but you forgot, brother Bashir. If black women ain't have your back, bruh, now what?
Whoa, all right, let's get, let's get to the lovely emails by former Las Vegas Raiders head coach John Gruden. John Gruden has a string of emails spanning back to two thousand and eighteen, going back ten years. He resigned as coach because they were not only racist, but homophobic and things of that nature. Now, Imani, make sure you do, if you say something bad, make sure you hit the delete button.
You can't.
What's your comment on it?
I didn't say anything, I didn't say anything. What I would say is that, first of all, I'm a very honest person. I'm a journalist like you.
Right.
And so I don't talk about stuff that I really don't know about.
Right.
That's number one, I don't pretend, no things I don't, number one. Number two, I really agree with what Jay said as far as the people have to get involved.
Thank you.
The people have to get involved, but I think, you know, elected officials and those who are seeking to be public servants, need to also realize that the people may need us to help them understand the process, to make the process less intimidating.
Right.
Um, that's what I have to say. And, you know, to all the other comments and things that are going on with the race in Cleveland, I got my blinders on. But what I would say is, is that I think in everything that you do, and especially if you are putting yourself in a place and platform where you are saying that you wanna serve people, to be very mindful that you are thinking of all the people.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right.
So you can't, what I take away from your comment, um, about his comments, is that you can't isolate groups like that, you know? If you don't, if you don't get a certain demographic support, then maybe look at where did your campaign need to beef it up? Or did you miss inter, did you miss interacting with a particular group and finding out what they care about? Or, you know, like isolating people, we are in such a time where like divisive politics is not gonna move us forward. So trying to find where can we focus on some things we can unite around? You know, I, my prayer is to be able to keep the goal in mind and steer as clear as I can of the politics in politics.
Mm-hmm, that's what it is, politics.
You know, shout out to, to voters, shout out to candidates who have the courage to run, but keep your motives pure. Cause if, if they're not, you know, people, people know.
They see right through it, Ryan.
Authenticity resonates with people.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, um.
Your mask will fall off eventually.
Yeah, that's all I.
The mask does fall off.
Oh, can I just say this one thing?
Go ahead.
Black women, you cannot leave us out of the equation.
Never.
Any candidate, any candidate.
We are the largest voting population.
Thank you, and we, we move the needle for the Democratic Party, for Joe Biden and Kamala Harris to be in office.
Yes.
And what have we gotten?
And, and, right. So, you know, I, I am proud to say, I will, I would like to just interject this if it's okay.
That's fine.
You know, in being a woman, African American woman, first time getting in politics, running against an incumbent, there were a lot of things in the beginning that felt like very intimidating.
It is.
And I am happy to say that my first endorsement came from the Black Women's Political Action Committee.
Shout out to them, man, they always come through.
You cannot leave black women out of the equation.
You can't.
Point blank, the end. I'm also happy to say that I got an endorsement from the Cleveland Stonewall Democrats.
That's what's up.
And I have a pending application with, um, the young black Democrats. I think I'll hear from them tomorrow, but.
That's, uh, what's his name, right? Young black Democrats, um, what's his, uh?
I'll, God, it escapes me.
His mom's a, his, his mom's a Jew.
Brian, um, Sickers.
Sickers, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Sickers.
Yeah.
You know, be careful how you use your mouth. And I, it's somebody, somebody said to me, uh, recently, I don't remember who I was talking to, but I said, you know what, I'm being very mindful of my words, cause if I ever have to eat them again, I want them to taste good.
That's right.
So.
Like Dave Chappelle is doing, but I don't even care right now, for real.
What about the, uh? So you going to Dave Chappelle?
Yeah, we going to Dave Chappelle.
Okay.
Uh, 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 listen, Dave's a comedian, he has no, um.
He's un, he's unfiltered.
Did everyone at this table see the Netflix special?
I saw some of it, I fell asleep on it.
I saw some of it too.
Okay, not the whole thing.
I always see, I saw Sticks and Stones before that.
Right, but this one was different.
So, so what's your take on it, Lizala?
So, um, I think that what I heard Dave saying is that he is a human, having a human experience, just like we all are. So we're kinda all going through this, new changes, new times, new everything together. The establishment and everyone kinda punches down on black people. And when he says anything, they're like, quit punching down on other communities. And he's saying, quit punching down on me and on my people. And he calls my people comedians and he calls my people black people. So he's talking about more groups than just black folks. And then what I also hear him saying is, um, the cancel culture is basically killing people's livelihoods and lives. It's not just ending a career, it's ending a life. And there are people who have had terrible outcomes for themselves and made horrible choices with, and I don't just mean they said the wrong thing, I mean, maybe they did take their life after some brouhaha on Twitter, after Instagram came after them. So he's saying, yo, let's chill with the cancel culture and let's kinda talk to each other and listen to each other and let's stop letting the powers that be divide us.
Right.
Which is what you were saying to Bashir also, which I think, you know, but he's like, we are being divided. What I think is sad is that people hear snippets of what he said and they say, okay, he is just being out of line. They're not even giving him the benefit of doubt of listening to his message. And so, like, we can cancel him. He was canceled before, after he left the fifty million, he had to come back or else his money would be gone, right? Like the money he's already amassed, yeah.
He canceled himself.
No, 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 what I'm saying, but also they made him come back to work.
Right.
He did not want to come back to work. And so this is what happens when you force a man to do something he doesn't wanna do to begin with. He speaks his mind.
Are you gonna say what he gonna say?
And he's also saying, let's equalize things, let's stop being unkind to each other, let's stop taking away people's careers.
He is unbossed and unbothered.
Because walking away from a show is one thing, but then having it be out there that like you're doing all these things with your life that you might not be doing.
Mm-hmm.
That's what damaged him.
Mm-hmm.
You know, oh, Dave's crazy, oh, maybe we should talk to Dave. Dave's on drugs, do we really know that?
He, he just could've been at a point in his life where he just really wanted the time to figure out who he was.
And what he wanted was to get away from that, um, he didn't like the way they were acting on his show.
Right.
Really?
Someone laughed a little too hard at some of his jokes and he thought maybe they weren't, like, maybe they were actually racist and maybe they weren't laughing with him.
But at him?
Right.
Right, well.
So I kinda, I kinda, kinda heard, and I've read some of the reviews, um, pertaining to what Lizala just said. And it is, he's right about the cancel culture. Where did these people come from? Why are we so quick to just say, oh, let's can, cancel somebody because it's something that we feel like we don't like? We're all entitled to our own opinion, whether you like it or not. That's what makes us a democracy. That is why we are able to voice our opinions and our concerns. So I ride with David Chappelle, because he does have a right to voice his opinions and voice his concerns. People need to stop being so insens, being sensitive to what people are saying. Just because I don't always agree with you, doesn't mean I don't like you. Doesn't mean I don't see your point of view. Your point of view is just not my point of view, because I see things through a different lens than you may see them through. So let's disagree to disagree. You're entitled to your thoughts, I'm entitled to my thoughts. We can still be adults and keep it moving. That's what makes the world go round. We're to the point now in this country to where we are one-sided. It has to be one way and that's it. We don't get to have different things. We have to have the same opinion, because that's what makes everybody conform. We, we need to stop conforming to having one opinion. We all see things differently. We're not, you can't keep brainwashing us.
So let me ask you a question. I'mma play devil's advocate a little bit. A lot of folks are like, okay, um, what Dave is doing is hurting the LGBTQ community. His comments are literally causing people to die. He's promoting a point of view that causes people to lose their livelihood and their lives. So I'm wondering what the response is to.
He's a comedian.
Right.
He's a comedian.
Right.
He is a comedian.
Okay, so what I'm saying is when the comedian is putting out ideas to hurt people.
He's a comedian. He's, he, except for, don't, he's a comedian. Funny, he's having a joke. And trust me, I don't have anything against the LGBTQIA community, cause a lot of them are friends of mine. But people take things way out of context.
All right, so let, Imani, let's get your perspective on what is going on back and forth. What, what do you think?
Yeah, I think this is really interesting. I still have to watch the documentary, but, um, in general, I would say, or not the documentary, the comedy special, in general, I would say there is, there is validity to elements of both arguments. In one sense that like, we are not all gonna have the same opinion, same thought, same feeling, that's given.
Mm-hmm.
We do live in a democracy with First Amendment, free speech, all that. However, at the same time, the other side of the coin is that there are consequences for what we say. So I think when you have someone like, when you have someone like Dave Chappelle, who is in the business of entertainment, however, he has a massive platform. What I'm concerned about, as someone who says that they love black people and they're fighting for black people, does that encompass all black people? And if it does, how can you use your platform maybe more in, in service of helping to bring some awareness around these issues? I heard Roland Martin do an interview with a gentleman, uh, his last name is Edwards. I think he's the, the head of the Black National Justice Coalition. They do a lot of work for LGBTQ plus I A people. And he was basically saying that, you know, he don't wanna necessarily cancel, uh, Dave Chappelle, but to deepen the dialogue, to understand when you get up there and make certain content about this community, especially when a time when black transgender women are killed at a much higher rate than any other demographic, you have to understand that that's having impact in terms of what people think may be okay for culture. So, um, I, that's my personal perspective. I don't think that you can ignore that, you know? And we also get to a place and space, and to be honest with you, you know, another thing that we didn't talk about in my background, uh, and I'm proud to say this, people may have mixed opinions about it, but I don't regret my work in working with the Mute R. Kelly movement and being the Cleveland coordinator for that. We as a culture, especially African Americans, have the opportunity to like raise the bar on some things. And raising the bar is not necessarily like, I'm trying to shut down your freedom of speech or your ability to be creative. But when are we going to get past, first of all, have some honest dialogue about the ways in which we abuse, oppress and play out post-traumatic slave syndrome with one another culturally? And that's an inside conversation that might not be for everybody. But we, we, we have to raise the bar higher, because it's our people that are dying at a higher rate. So there is a fine line, I think, that needs to be established between how far do we go with our comedy? And if we're gonna go this way with our comedy, then are, are you also using your platform to balance that out in, in other ways, is my perspective.
All right, we're gonna go to break. One thing about this is um, um, one of my favorite songs, but before I do that, I'm gonna say, I mean, Dave Chappelle is a comedian, he doesn't have a decision maker. And listen, he ain't do nothing illegal. We'll be right back on the nerve, DJ's the headline, I will be right back.
This is W N R V one oh eight point one.
Hi, this is Marissa and you can catch me every Wednesday on the Headline I at six P M on W N R V one oh eight point one.
My dad was a police officer and firefighter. My mom's a social worker. I'm Justin Bibb. I lost a cousin to murder. Crime and violence threaten us all. We need real public safety and equal justice. My safety plan will improve police training, add mental health support, move more police out into Cleveland's neighborhoods, and guarantee accountability with citizen oversight. Real safety and equal justice. It's a fight we can win. I'm Justin Bibb.
Paid for by neighbors for Justin Bibb.
Alright, we're back with My Way by Usher. We're doing it my way here on the, on the Headline I. Uh, our guest Imani Capri, I just gotta introduce the, introduce the band. Uh, Queen with the Gold Mike, Jay Price, Queen of the Stimply Stunning Menial Lizala Perry, the Human T-Race and the Ones and Twos in the building along with our guest Imani Capri who's running for city council president of Maple Heights. Imani?
Yes, sir.
How are you enjoying your time here so far?
I love this, you all are great, thank you so much for the invitation. And you know, to what Ms. Jay was saying, we do not all have to have the same opinion on everything, but I think it's important to have
dialect.
Yeah, dialogue and be able to say, you know what? You and I have different perspectives on some things related to R Kelly.
But that don't mean we don't like each other.
Or it doesn't mean that we can't have some type of dialogue and find some way to
fix it.
Right.
Dialogue is what's needed, even if it's difficult.
I'm saying screw R Kelly until the day he die. That's my opinion as a, as, listen, I know I said the record companies and the people that were involved need to be punished for what happened to those girls.
They do.
Little girls were victims, but at the end of the day, listen, I am a man and I, as a man, I have to take responsibility for my own actions. And if R Kelly did those thi- and R Kelly has been convicted of those things, like, you know, Dave Chappelle said what he said about, you know, that, that community. He was comparing it to like, you know, he wishes that we, we as African Americans, especially African American women, don't get respected in this country, period. So to have three African American women, two are my co-hosts, you know, plus a shout out to my girl, Ms. Marissa, who was out there working hard for the, of the campaign she's working on, so shout out to her for working hard, that's why she's not able to be here. You know, November second is coming around the corner. And African American women, I give y'all one thing, y'all, I'll vote us. And I, a- and as an African American man, I have to admit that. Especially my age bracket between the ages of thirty-five and fifty-two, because the simple fact of the matter is y'all, y'all niggas too lazy to do any damn thing. Excuse my pardon, my friends, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Y'all will, and just because somebody goes with a candidate, that doesn't mean that that's the best candidate for you. Meaning I don't care if your best friend who used to be, who's about to be an ex-councilman in a certain ward went with this candidate and you've known him since birth, don't mean absolutely positively in nothing right now. I'm just saying. So.
Kevin Kelly's not the right candidate for you.
I, I will, I'm, 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 I'm keep, I will keep my
I mean, you already gave your endorsement, right?
I, I have not yet, I'm waiting.
Oh, yeah, he's waiting until the end of the show.
So I got a couple of them that I'm giving out.
Are you beside, which ones? Merrill raised, what?
I got a couple of them I'm giving out, hold on, calm down. Calm down, you pushing, you trying to push the needle a little bit, huh?
Trying to get a little po one one.
I ain't giving you that. So, Imani. So the thing about it is, is like, you know, you discuss, you know, discuss the candidacy and things of that nature. What is the hardest part about running a political campaign? What is the, one of the hardest parts, what are the hardest things you want to campaign trail? I know health and things of that nature slowed you down a little bit, not that much, but what is the hardest part?
I would say so far the hardest, the two most challenging things, it's your campaign, you have to own it. So, you know, even though you may have volunteers, at the end of the day, people have lives and schedules. People do as much as they can, but if they can't, you have to fill all, you, you gotta fill in the pieces. And so um, I'm doing a whole lot, even with volunteers. So that, that has been challenging, like, you know, I do the interviews and I'm building my own website and then I'm like doing, doing, but I don't regret it because I know there's
good experience.
For other things.
Exactly.
The other part is like navigating the politics in a way to where you kind of can stay outside the fray. You know, but you have to do it in such a way to where, you know, should I be elected, I need to be able to have a working relationship with all these individuals that already kind of have some history with each other.
Different personalities.
And there's maybe clicks within. Oh, if you're over here with this group, we don't know if we should, you know, like, all of that, which sometimes feels kind of juvenile.
High schoolish.
Learning how to navigate that with grace. And um, what does my boyfriend say, I love him so much. He says
Who he?
That's Bay. Uh, he says, he says, you know, you kind of have to take the energy of the principal in school and not the janitor, like let people clean up their own mess.
That's a good analogy.
Shout out to your dude right about now, I'm gonna give him a shout out as an African American man, you, 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 you get to black this stuff for that one, bro.
That's a great analogy.
It's incredible, so, you know, when I talk with him about different things or meetings or the inside scoop of running this campaign and interacting in the landscape, he'll just be like, you know, principal energy. And, you know, and, and, and it's so funny because he's very energetic and stuff and he'll say, um, you know how the principal is, like the principal would be like, yeah, you might have missed a couple of days of school, but that mess got your name on the floor and nobody else is picking it up. He was like, let people, be the example of what you feel needs to change. And then let people kind of janitor themselves. You know, and so I think that um, that, that's been like a piece of advice that somebody's giving me that I've, has been helpful in navigating, and then just like be yourself.
Yeah, you have to.
You got to be yourself, gotta be yourself.
You have to.
Nobody else gonna want that walk, walk that mile for you, period.
But that, that was a great analogy.
That is, that is a great analogy.
Great analogy.
Great analogy. So what is the one thing, if somebody wants to run for something, what is the one piece of advice you can give them going through all this right now? Imani?
Wow, can I answer that right now? Oh.
I mean, you doing it right now, so.
Yeah, but sometimes they say it's maybe after November second.
Well, I'm gonna, you know what, you, I want you to come back on November second, yeah.
I think I would just say, be very clear about why you do things.
That's good advice for life.
Be really, really clear about like why you are doing something. Hold on to your why. And if your why is not coming from a genuine
place.
Authentic place, it will haunt you.
Yep.
Yes, it will.
So um, that would be my advice so far.
Right.
I'm sure she'll have a lot more after she wins on November second.
Come back as the council president.
Right, we'll, we'll say madam president.
Council president.
Madam President.
So you, I'm pretty much, you, like, I've heard you on the radio. Um, I, I heard you, you know, on your, your lives and speaking and being authentic. Is, what is the, what? Do you miss talking on the air right now? Because you gotta step away because of the
Yeah, the fair time rule.
Right.
Um, I do actually miss this, you know, being in the studio with guests and just having a good time on the air. I, I miss it, but at the same time, I also have been enjoying kind of having a break.
You need that break sometimes.
Yeah, I, and you know, with my show, I had two shows on W O U, um, produ- producing the shows, booking the shows, interviewing, like all of that, non-stop for like almost three years, so taking a breather has been cool.
I understand, it's been five years for me and then I
And I take hiatuses.
Right, she take hiatuses, you know, I'm constantly mo- as you can see on social media, constantly moving and grooving.
I have to take hiatuses, just because of all the stuff that I'm, my brain gets exhausted. It gets very exhausted.
And even though I'm not technically on the air with my shows, I'm still talking to people, like all of this is really interviewing. You know, and helping people use their voice, share their voice, find their voice. So I don't feel like I've veered off too far, but
You're, they're interviewing you, you're interviewing your consent- contention, which you have to ask questions, so you're used to the interviewing, how does it feel to be on the other side of the fence being interviewed?
You know, um, I'm more comfortable with it now than I was in the beginning. But I think one thing that I've found is just keep it real with people. Like, most people are not, most of the people that I've encountered, I, I used to be, I'm gonna tell you, I used to be like so intimidated to go canvas because, you know
Really?
Yeah, really, and I'm gonna tell you why. When we were on the, when you're on the radio or TV or speaking, people want you there. Right? And they're listening to your show and if, if they're like, oh, she's not good, I don't like, like the rejection is kind of far away and you might not even see it, feel it, register. Cold knocking on somebody's door who may not know you and let me introduce myself and why you should come out and potentially vote for me. I was like, every time we get ready to go canvas, I tell my mom, like, I feel like I'm about to throw up. But my experience was totally different. And when I realized, it's like, this is just like interviewing people. Like, just knock on, first of all, they're glad that, and most Maple Heights residents are residents that like for you to knock on their door. And to see you out, trying to introduce yourself to them.
That, you may have been the only company they had that day or that week or that month or that year.
Covid and conversation, right? What I found was just be real with people, be honest, but more than that, listen. That's what I would say for somebody who's running for um, office. Listen, listen a lot. I see sometimes with certain elected officials and even other candidates running, I think the, the, the temptation of the potential of power can seduce the ego out of people so much that they are not even really listening to the people as much as they should be listening.
They're not listening to understand, you're listening to respond.
Or listen to learn so that you can execute on behalf of
What's that? What's the learn part?
Yes, and you're right though, because I see a lot of people when they run up on opposition, they dismiss it. They correct them, they overtalk them and they hop off.
Yep.
And then they go live to a vacuum to recount what just happened, so, yeah, there's no listening.
Learn so much, like if you listen to that person that you may not agree with, and this is a life lesson. You know, if I, if I had just shut you down, or nobody can shut you down or me down really, but let's just say if I, the first thing you said, I like R Kelly and then everything else, I just maybe if I just listened to what you had to say, listening doesn't mean agree.
Exactly.
But I showed you the respect to have the space to express how you feel and then I share my perspective and why, maybe something might shift in your perspective because I showed you respect, or vice versa. And I think the same thing is needed when it comes to our politics because it has gotten to like a really nasty funky dysfunctional level, definitely at the national level.
Oh, my God.
Dignity has to be restored, so listen and learn from people.
They're not gonna do that.
Right, they never do, so I mean, the thing is, is that I really appreciate the genuine honesty that you're showing right now, you know, and I think that's what's missing in politics, especially, I'm, I like, I, I'm everywhere. You know, so like here, there, I like, thank you.
Thank you for sharing, thank you for sharing when you're out there.
Right, and, and the reason I do that is because people who can't get out there or can't be informed, uh, that's the one thing that I do it for. And the one thing that I usually do, I have like, why do you go and share every time you go to the Board of Vales and the early vote? Because people still don't know, they'll probably be too busy, like I'm down here right now. You know, like the protest that, you know, the other pastors did in Sherman Williams, I had somebody, I thought, like, shout out to Azel Bold who ran for board too. He came right down. He was like, where you at? I'm like downtown here, downtown Sherman Williams. He, he was right, he was bright, he came right down like five to ten minutes later, like, he flew down because that Sherman Williams thing, we talk about the racism against the black contractors and not employing black contractors is more important than, you know, giving, this is an opportunity to give African American people who have, who weren't working that field a job or position, there's a six hundred million dollar project going on downtown with Sherman Williams. They're building their home office there. And when I said allegedly that a pastor and somebody from the Black Contractors Union took a backdoor deal for one million dollars, so that means that the other pastors are trying to get the black contractor at least twenty to thirty million dollars. You know, that's like making the, oh, I'm gonna get these black contractors for a million dollars when they're worth much more than that. That's why you got people out here not going to these fast food restaurants after COVID because I'm gonna make more money staying the hell it home. So you gotta realize that you gotta, sometimes you gotta up the ante when it comes to people because people want to know what can you do for me and what can you do for the community?
I got Ramina Foster over here, she's, she says one hundred, she's listening. She's, she's listening, she's listening to, she's listening to her, her residents, she's a precinct committee person.
Ramina always listens to her residents, she might not like what's going on all the time in World War, but she's, but she, but Ramina Foster, I would give, give a black woman a shout out. Ramina Foster, precinct committee person, you always listen to your residents, shout out to the block parties that you
And we don't always agree, Ramina and I don't always agree, but there's that respect factor.
So, alright, I'm gonna just take a quick shot at John Gruden's emails. Imani? Imani?
Yep, I have her, I did, I did have that on CNN in the background a couple of days ago.
What you think about that? What you think about the ex ex Vegas Raiders coach doing all that dirty stuff he sent on an email?
I just think, you know, if most people have to start off saying, I don't have a racist. Bone and you probably do. I I so the fact that he's not the coach anymore, right, I think is probably a good thing. It's just a time for us to do better and stop faking the funk. I mean, for real, you can't know that you've done something like that in your past and then turn around and try to say. Oh, I'm not this, or I didn't that, or I don't have these feelings or opinions towards people of color or women. Or people who are part of the LGBTQIA plus community, you know, listen. News announcement, public service announcement. A certain type of white patriarchal male misogyny, racism, sexism. All the other kind of isms is dying. There's nothing productive and conducive that comes out of that to uplift all people. So if you are trying to hold on to that that type of mindset. This false idea of superiority because of the color of your skin or the gender or your sexual orientation preference and you, you know. Disparage other groups, like it's gonna it's gonna bite you. It's gonna bite you, so I I just, um, I think it's a good thing he's not the coach anymore. I mean, it took a long time to get here.
It it here's the thing, he wasn't being investigated, the NFL was just doing a random. Like a dragnet random sweep of all the emails and him and and the reason why that. Whoever leaked that one between him and former Redskins general manager Bruce Allen. Here's the reason why it was leaked because Daniel Snyder, the owner of the Washington Football Team, he used to be the Redskins. You know, was trying to get something on George Allen because George Allen was suing him.
There's more to this.
There's gonna be more people going down that rabbit hole besides Gruden.
I mean, the. So I got a couple of people. Over here, so okay, Troy, I'll get to you in a minute. So Sandra Moore is saying John Gruden, he said, that was the bullish shit I've ever heard.
Like he doesn't have a racist bone in his body? I wore my hip boots when he said that, for real.
Ramina, Ramina, um, is saying Larry, mad love, she loves us, we love her back. Um, Troy, Troy wasn't blowing kisses at you, so don't worry about it.
Shout out to Troy Harris, I give my man a shout out, Heist Girl Two, you know, he's always been a good actor, he we may not agree. Sometimes, but you know.
Ramina says, Larry, are you going, did Larry, are you or did you speak on what you guys talked about? Um, so I don't know what that was, but she she wants to know you're gonna speak on that, but um, John Gruden. You know, as long as these, this is from eleven years, right?
Yeah, he been doing, and and he, I guess it stopped in twenty eighteen, so.
So so in the beginning, he was talking, you you know, he was making very derogatory comments about black men, correct? Black players and 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 Roger Goodell, he didn't, he couldn't stand Roger Goodell, from what I understand.
Roger Goodell could give him some um, some oral.
I I don't know about all of that, but I know he had said some things about Roger Goodell, but it was, it wasn't until he said something. Um, very homophobic.
Yes, and that's Dave's point.
Is when it came out.
People are getting canceled after they say stuff about gay people, but what about?
Black people.
So, and that's where I was going. And 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 you trust me, you know, I I love my brothers and sisters in the LGBTQIA community. Um, uh, I, some of them are my dear friends, but how how was it acceptable? That he was able to speak these derogatory things about African American men? But as soon as he says something against that community whom I love very dearly.
Is a slave plantation.
That's the whole thing and they using the black people as a scapegoat. I mean, they use, they like, I mean, they they always gonna use the black people as a scapegoat, even with feminism, they're using the black women as a scapegoat. It's just, it's just, it's always entitled, white people can make the rules and feel like they can do that.
Okay, so how many people were not surprised that John Gruden would say these things in private? How many people, raise your hand if you were not saying surprised, were not surprised that he would say, listen. That John Gruden would, how many people were not surprised that he say these things, raise your hand?
Oh, I wasn't surprised, because they've they've said far, you know, far worse.
There's probably some more far worse stuff that's gonna come out.
But listen, this is what Troy just said, he said the NFL said there are more emails that the NFL has that will expose others. In high positions that they don't want to release.
Yeah, and you know, it's funny because ever since AOL, they've been saying, be careful what you type, be careful what you type, all these people thought they were above. Scrutiny, I'll never be discovered, like the cardinal rule is be careful what you type, it never. It never goes away. So it'll be fun watching this.
And I'm sure it's gonna unravel and 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 I'm I'm gonna put it on, I'm gonna go ahead and put it on out there. Boy, they said something about my baby Mike Tomlin in Pittsburgh. I'm on my way to Pittsburgh. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rescue my man. Sorry, Ice Cube, I might have to go rescue my man. Oh, they s- uh, Sandra Moore said, he said, I would love to see Jerry Jones emails. We know Jerry's racist.
Jerry just breezed the. I think he writes the N word in his sleep to notes to some of, to some of his executives to give him a laugh or something like that. I think Jerry. I think Jerry Jones is a lawn jockey outside in the back of his manage mansion, I just truly believe that.
He is the epitome of.
I hate black people.
Male showanistic, I'm better than any other specimen.
So I'm not a big sports person, so some of these people I do not know.
You said white male supremacy, Jerry Jones is that.
Like, you know, this this false idea of like. Everything that I said about white male patriarchy supremacy. The fallacy of that supremacist idea and 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 how that gets carried out in culture. And how that was founded. Or at the foundation of how our country started and we still, until we really deal with slavery. I mean, really deal with it, all this stuff is not gonna go away because there's this false idea of a power dynamic.
What what generation are you? I'm sorry, cut you off. Are you in the millennials? How old are you? Oh, you're you're Gen X like me? Because I was gonna, the reason why I asked is because you said until we address slavery, um, we're not gonna move past this. Where the generation behind us said it didn't affect them, so it didn't, it don't exist. That's how millennials feel. The ones that I've talked to.
I get what they saying, I mean.
I think they don't really get it and like.
I I think that, I I just think that really, to be honest with you. We just gotta get past, listen, we gotta get past all this BS that's been going on right now as far as, let's deal, I know. Slavery and let's deal with it now.
We're in slavery in a different stage. We're enslaved at a different stage. We're enslaved by our own mentality because we've been brainwashed for so long.
That's why certain former, soon to be former councilmen can go and betray their brothers in certain fraternities. And go endorse a white man that don't care about the east side.
It's deeper too than just what we need to undo inside of our own culture as a result of that. You have people who are legislators, literally trying to turn back the law of time. Not just the hand of time. I mean, if you, if 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 women can't have say so over.
Their bodies.
Their bodies and their healthcare, is that not a form of slavery?
That is, actually, you are absolutely correct.
And and then to see how women of color and black women in particular would be impacted by that. Very, it is a very relevant issue. I think what is, if I can just put this out there, I think what's needed. Is more people that are not intellectually lazy and courageous to help educate people. And also help connect the dots. And for our young people, you know, you you have. You have people trying to turn back the law of time and not teach accurate history in the school system, trying to label it under. Critical race theory, which those two things are. I think it's really super important that shows like yours, other people who are journalists. That we are giving people the information and helping them connect the dots because. There's so many other distractions and things going on that while you're paying attention to this over here. Texas. And it's been reversed from the appeal, I think back to, um.
Yeah, it was reversed.
Being active or so, it'd be, I I have to get caught up, but the point is. We, until we address slavery, would it, um, my girl saying color purple. Deal with that and start looking at how there was this false sense of a power dynamic setup. And then institutions built around that. I think it it's, it sounds like a lot, but and it is a lot, but it connects back to that.
Well, it does. So we're gonna, T-Rex, we're gonna take our last break, I'm not doing the lines today. Because I got some announcements to make, but that is a very good point. By the way, listen, it it listen. Everybody says that the NFL half, the Super Bowl halftime show is gonna have Snoop Dogg, Dr. Dre, Eminem. And I think Ice Cube might be on there that ticked it. The thing about it is, I think John Gruden and Jerry Jones between them said more N words than all of those rappers combined, just saying. And vote for Imani Kabria if you are in Maple Heights, so I'll be right back with my endorsements. This is her focus. We all focusing right now, we'll be right back.
This is W N R V one oh eight point one.
Hey y'all, this is Catherine Danille and I'm checking in with Headline I on W N R V one oh eight point one.
Oh, baby.
Alright, welcome back to the Headline I on. Nerd DJs Network, we get on your nerves on this, on this nice day, uh, September.
The devil is over there in the corner.
So when you have a rate, uh, when you have a former um, producer, well, still producing. Who's running for office, Imani Kabria, everything comes up when she's just said some things. When you got, when you got knowledge in the room.
Maple Heights would be lucky to have her, have her as their candidate president.
They should be.
They will be.
Alright, T-Rex, I hope my Facebook Live is up because I'm gonna make this perfectly clear right now, so I am going to, I never do this before. I'm gonna do this right now.
I'm gonna sit here.
Alright, so the first person that I'm actually going to endorse. For candidacy is the woman that is right across from me, Imani Kabria for. For Maple Heights County Council President. City Council President, the reason why is that we need young, innovative, new leadership in this mug. And she will inject some sense hopefully in Maple.
She's my endorsed candidate as well, also in Garfield, Barbie West.
Barbie West, I know Barbie.
She's my endorsed candidate for Garfield Heights.
So, I'm not doing none of the wars, so please, whoever's listening who's running in these wars, I'm not doing any wars because. Listen, I live in Ward Four, there's a race going on, I'm not, I'm I'll probably save Ward Four for last. I'm not doing more, I'm not doing my ward as far as an endorsed candidate. By the way, you know, the six years that councilman, former city councilman Ken Johnson got. You know, he's going to roll over on some people right now.
And he has to pay restitution.
Six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Good, good. By the time Ken Johnson gets out of federal prison, unless he snitches on some more people. He'll be eighty years old, so.
So who, oh, you're in Ward Four, right?
I can't stand it.
It's been that way for years. I'm I'm not endorsing anybody in Ward Four, that that race is.
I don't know what's going on with that. I met Eric Walker, you know, I I met Deborah Gray, I don't know. I'll I'll, you know what, I'll, you know, as far as Ward Four, I'll flip a coin, so. Yeah, I know when I get in the booth. So, T-Rex, drumroll please for the last endorsement. And that is the mayor of the city of Cleveland. I am endorsing Justin Bibb for mayor of the city of Cleveland, and let me tell you why. I go by the way of my heart. Now, a lot of people may not agree with it. Young, they call Justin Bibb young, they call him inexperienced, but guess what? There was a certain senator in Chicago, they called young inexperienced, last name was Obama. I'm not comparing him to Obama, but the thing about it is, is that. I have a city council person, my former city council person is in federal. I have a city council person, my former city council person is in federal prison for bribery. That's under Kevin Kelly's watch as city council president. We had a city council person in Ward Seven who lived in Cleveland Heights. That is under your count, that is under your administration, Kevin. You blocked, voter suppressed, not only the Q deal, but the fifteen dollar an hour thing. I don't care what you say about the signatures, Kevin, you have been, listen, you kept, you you collected a paycheck. That's what you did, that's all you did. It's time for new, if if it shakes up the corruption in City Hall and 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 you know, the the light has turned on and the roaches are scattering like all over the damn floor. If it crushes the roaches in City Hall, all the corruption, I am tired of the FBI and other alphabet boys of law enforcement coming down and investigating my. I understand that.
And 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 I'll put it out there, and I'm gonna put it out there. Um, after November second, I will tell you who I voted for. Win or lose.
Like, the thing about it is, is that the reason that I'm going behind Bibb, and another reason, I'm going to say this. To, and also, I'm going to say this about, I also have another announcement. I worked with Pastor Aaron Phillips before on camp political campaigns, yes, I have. I've been a member of Sure House. I am taking a self-imposed boycott of my membership of Sure House Baptist Church until indefinitely.
Say when, eh?
I am taking a self-imposed boycott of Sure House Baptist Church indefinitely because of what happened last Wednesday. I understand that maybe you might have been overzealous, Aaron, but you don't put me in a position to where I have to choose right and wrong. What you did, putting us there in that position, saying that the members go the way that you go, you need to talk to your head, you need to talk to the head of the Deacon Board, Mr. Marvin Freeman, he's not happy right now that it happened. You didn't tell him what was going on. By the way, if you really wanna know what happened with that million dollar deal that somebody was supposed to get and cut out the rest of the pastors, you wanna ask Sherwin Williams, period. Because of the simple fact of the matter is, I told you, and when we talk privately, I'm not, you said, I think that you told me that what I want my son to run, my son is nine years old for mayor. If my son was qualified.